Well, good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our Monday, June 26 Fayetteville City Council meeting to order. We welcome all of you who are joining us in person tonight, those who are joining us remotely. At this time, item number one is the invocation. We would ask that Rabbi Goldberg of the Beth Israel Congregation, if he would, come lead us. Ask that we would please stand for the prayer immediately following which, if we could repeat the pledge of allegiance. Rabbi?
One week from tomorrow is, of course, the 247th celebration of Independence Day for our great nation. It was not perfect then, nor is it perfect today. But 11 years after that Declaration of Independence, it was famously stated in the preamble to what was then a new Constitution. Regarding the purpose of that Constitution, we, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our prosperity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America. As political and spiritual descendants of the founders of our country, it is our ongoing responsibility to unceasingly strive for an ever more perfect union within our nation, our state, our municipality, and our neighborhoods, indeed wherever we join together with others. The ratification of a Constitution was but a single act, admittedly a complex, multifaceted, and transformative act. But nonetheless, just a single act, the ongoing process of making concrete in the structure and life of our nation, the abstract values upon which it was founded. So allow me to take this moment to remind us, in highly, highly edited and abbreviated form, I promise, those values as articulated in that earth-shattering American Declaration of Independence, of those abstract values which need to be made concrete in every generation. Some of you may take issue with some of the manner in which I have edited these following words, but I at least promise that not a single word, nor its order, has been at all altered. In Congress, July 4, 1776, unanimous declaration of the 13 United States of America. When in the course of human events, it becomes necessary for one people to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and nature's God entitle them, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. We, the representatives of the United States of America, in general Congress assembled, appealing to the supreme judge of the world for the rectitude of our intentions, do in the name and by authority of the good people have full power to do all acts and things which independent states may have right do. And for the support of this declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor. May that be God's will. Amen.
The United States of America, through the republic which stands one nation under God, in the Israel where we live and justice for all.
Rabbi, thank you for that. We'd like to take just a moment to tell us about yourself or your congregation.
Almost exactly four years ago to this day, I came to Fayetteville, to this wonderful community and to serve the only Jewish congregation that is or has ever been in Fayetteville. We're blessed to have a large structure from a time when the Jewish population of the community was larger. But we're still pleased to be stable, providing sacred service to the members of our faith and to also share with the rest of our community the values and perspectives of our Jewish tradition. And thank you for inviting me this evening.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. At this time, we have a very special announcement. I'll defer to my colleague, Councilmember DJ Hare, to introduce and to bring the honoree forward tonight.
Moving a little slow. I took my boot off a little early, Mayor, so I'm moving a little slow. It is indeed an honor for me to stand before you this evening. I love celebrating people and I love celebrating businesses in our city. And I love celebrating accolades that our community brings. Tonight, I stand before you to bring forward one of our natives. He was our fourth round draft pick from our very own HBCU Fayetteville State in 2022. And that is always a great thing when we have a student athlete that comes from one of our HBCUs. This young man, I'm glad to also call him my fraternity brother, Mr. Joshua Williams. He had a, those of you didn't know, he had a football, I guess, seminar conference camp over the, over last week. And my, my son-in-law, my son, my grandson went. And we went out for Father's Day, and he began to tell me such great things about how Brother Joshua was a humble guy. He was a kind guy. And he was a sincere guy. And then they went and played in our last Super Bowl. There he is with the Kansas City Chiefs. And my brother and his teammates went and won the Super Bowl. If we could, let's just give them an applause from right here at, at home. Then the text messages between the mayor and Mrs. Ingram and I and others began to go back and forth. And we wanted to do something to, as a city, as a council, as a mayor, as citizens of Fayetteville, to give our brother, our friend, our native, our cousin, our son, however you may look at him, we wanted to show him that we love and we support him and his accolades and his team and all the great things that they have done. So if we could, I'm going to ask number 23 of the Super Bowl champions, Kansas City Chiefs, Mr. Williams, Mr. Josh Williams, to please come forward and receive our highest honor that was bestowed upon him between the mayor and I. Those of you that, here he is, Mayor, those of you that know me, I don't run away from the things of God. And I was not going to let this get away because the Lord laid it in my heart on Saturday as I was spending time with Him. And your face and your name, just meeting you for the first time, good brother, came in my spirit. And the Lord told me to pray over you. And right now, I'm doing that and asking the Lord to, oh yeah, to protect your body, to protect you as you're making your moves out there on the field, that you would stay whole, that you would not be broken up, and that you will be able to live through, my brother, that this dream that God has given you. And I wanted to make sure I did that. I said, "Well, Lord," but He puts me in these places to say it. So I'm humble enough and glad enough to say it. And we appreciate you. Thank you. Kids are talking about you because I got one in my family. Oh, I saw the pictures and the autograph frame and all, so we're really, really, really proud of you. And thank you for coming down. Stand right here. The mayor may have the words.
The reasons follows. It says, "On behalf of the Fayetteville City Council and the citizens of Fayetteville, North Carolina, our city king and corn are proudly presented to Joshua Williams in grateful recognition of his devoted efforts to support the youth and provide exceptional leadership on and off the field." Mr. Williams, thank you for your leadership.
And since this is a real, real special occasion, like we do sometimes, if our council can kind of come together, Ms. Ingram, please come down as the district representative. If you all can kind of come here, let us take one big picture also, okay? Okay.
The only thing I can say is I'm overwhelmed with just feelings of joy, appreciation, and, you know, for my family to be here, my friends, my frat brothers, just so many people in the community rooting for me, especially through, you know, such a big year. There was a lot of jumps, a lot of hurdles. It, you know, really helped. It really did help me get through, you know, any kind of trials and tribulations I faced during the season. Just knowing I had, you know, almost the whole city of Fayetteville, family, friends, you know, fraternity brothers, friends of friends, aunts, uncles, everybody just praying for me and all, just being behind me. I can't really put into words how much I appreciate you all, my city, my family, my community. And, you know, I'll always do my best to give it my all, represent the best possible way I know how to, and just give back. I appreciate you all and love you all.
Mr. Williams, thank you so much. And, you know, behind every great young man there are parents who poured into him as well as this community. So definitely proud of you, sir. Looking forward to great things for you in the, in the years to come. So continue to make us proud. At this time, we also have another group of, of our young best and brightest who are here tonight. I'll turn over to Councilmember Jensen, I think. Who's doing the icon? Okay, Mr. Clip. My apologies. We'll give a minute for Omega to clear. Y'all take care. All right. Mr. Clip, you look like you're part of that fraternity there. You got on purple, huh?
I can be.
All right.
Well, just like Councilmember Hare was saying, we, we love to recognize individuals. And we have another group that we would like to recognize tonight. We recently partnered with Cumberland County School System, and we partnered with them with the Innovative Career Opportunities Now Program, also known as ICON. And it's a program that allows Cumberland County high school students that are 16 years of age or older to apply and interview to work in paid positions within the city of Fayetteville. And it's one of those work-based learning educational programs that provides students with competencies and skills that allow them to connect school experiences with real-life work experiences as they're working here in the city. Now, they received some soft skills in the school system before they came to us. And then they underwent a pretty rigorous interview process with ourselves as an organization, as a partner organization, as well as other organizations. And we selected 14 students to host this year. And they are in various departments throughout the city. We found them to be bright, eager, professional, and quick to learn. So we're really proud of them. And we are joined also tonight by Sarah Banderega, who is the coordinator that I work with for this program, and Mr. Chip Lucas and Tanika Williams from the Career and Technical Education Program. We'd like to recognize these interns tonight for their great work that they are doing with our city. So would you like me to read the names or do you have the names up there?
Yes, sir. You can, you can do it. Did you want me to come down and present?
Yes, please. That would be great. So first, we have Megan Lane from Cumberland Polytechnic High, and she's serving in our IT department. We have Aiden Hayes, who's also in IT, also from Cumberland Polytechnic High. We have Joseph Lynch with Cape Fear High, who's in Parks and Rec. Jade Bloomfield from Gray's Creek High with Parks and Rec. Laura Fletcher from Jack Britt High with Parks and Rec. No, she's not here either, okay? Gabriel Bradford from Jack Britt High in Finance. Sophia Oznick, also from Jack Britt High, also in Finance. We have Kiara Rasko from Cape Fear High at the airport. Amelia Walden from Jack Britt High, also at the airport. Jayla Harper from Westover High with Construction Services. Caleb Sockwell from Reed Ross Classical, working in the clerk's office. So Pam, Caleb can take your place up there if you want. Jasmine Braddy from 71st High, Budget and Evaluation. Emma Posner from Jack Britt High, Marketing in the Print Shop. And last, we have Dagger Alacoa from Jack Britt High, also in Marketing in the Print Shop.
All right, let's, let's give our young folks another round of applause. They are, you know, they're, my mother used to say that idle, idle time is a devil's workshop. There's a lot of other things they could have been spending this summer doing, but they're working, earning money, and learning the skills and the, and the work ethic that it'll take to be successful. So thank you, guys, for what you're doing. At this time, I would defer to Councilmember Jensen, have another special presentation.
Okay, so if the Pulises can come up, the mayor will meet you down there, and I'll read the proclamation. So before I get started on this proclamation, I have sat up here for 10 years, and I will honestly say this will be one of the proudest proclamations I have ever read. I can say that I literally grew up with the Pulis family. And my mother and Kay Pulis were probably the best of friends. So it is very heartwarming, and I'm very proud at this moment. So, whereas in 1956 Superior Bakery opened its doors on Rayford Road to have continued to serve the community for over 60 years, and whereas the bakery was founded by Mr. John S. Pulis and with the help of his wife Kay, grew the bakery into a successful business now operated by their son Nick O-Pulis at the current location on Hope Mills Road. And whereas, on May 1, 2023, for the second year in a row, Superior Bakery won the covenant position of Yelp's annual list of the top 100 U.S. Donut Shops. Whereas Superior Bakery was named 13th Best Donut Shop in the Nation. 13th Best Donut Shop in the Nation. Whereas Yelp ranked this business using the number of factors, including the total volume and ratings of reviews between January 1, 2022, and March 31, 2023. And whereas Superior Bakery is a community treasure, creating delicious options by owners that treat you like family and take pride in their craft. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the 26th day of June of the year 2023 in honor of Superior Bakery. And witness thereof, I here do set my hand in the cause of the great city of Fayetteville affix the 22nd day of June 2023, Mayor Mitch Colvin. And Councilmember Honduras, if you'd like to meet me.
First of all, congratulations to our Super Bowl champ. I get to follow a Super Bowl champ. That's really cool. I want your autograph, Joshua, you here? And to you guys, I want your autographs too. Congratulations. That's very, very good for you guys. Mayor Colvin, Mayor Protem Dawkins, and council members, I'm really honored to stand before you. Thank you. On behalf of my mother and my wife, Kay Pulis and Kathy Pulis, and the entire Pulis family, thank you very much. Thank you. This means a lot. I stand on the shoulders of my father, who, as Ms. Jensen said, started the bakery in 1956. He taught us to work hard. He taught us to serve our church and to serve our community. And we do that every day to honor him. Every day, I promise you. We have to thank our customers. Ms. Jennifer is one of them. She's a regular. She doesn't look it. She doesn't look it. She's good. But we try every day to make our storefront the happiest place on earth. I think Disney says that. They're tough to beat them, but we try to do that, and we hand out donuts and cookies and... and hugs and kisses, and I think she can attest to that. Sometimes we have tears. You name it, we have it. It's a very special thing. Our staff, while I have four staff members over 20 years, 25, several over 10, I can't keep track of time, but several. Then we have many young kids that come through. We have high school kids. We have several. We help them along, mentor them. They get put in an environment. It's a really beautiful thing, so we're proud of that. And lastly, two lifelong friends are sitting up there. That's why you heard Ms. Jensen and Mr. Honduras. Lifelong friends, love you both very much. Thank you for making this happen. Both of their fathers, I'll use present tense, Colonel Keefe is no longer with us, but both of their fathers mentored me and taught me, and I'm proud of all of you. I wanted to be like them. His father worked as hard as anyone I've ever seen in my life, his, too. They gave me straight talk, poked me in the chest. Colonel Keefe did that a few times. Told me, didn't ask me, told me what to do. I did it, and it worked. God rest his soul. But thank you both. You make tonight even more special. Thank you.
Thank you to all of the honorees tonight, to the Pulis family, to ICON, to Joshua and his family. We have a lot of positive things and great people, and a lot of great things going on in our city, so keep up the good work, guys. At this time, I'll defer to Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to quickly, before I make my announcement, acknowledge my high school ninth-grade English teacher who is here with, actually, ICON. She is now the Career Pathways Coordinator. Ms. Tanika Williams is here. Wave your hand so they can see you. That's my English teacher, y'all. Thank her for all the work that she has done. So, you know, it's interesting that we are acknowledging, you know, our young adults and our youth, and I think what was most interesting to me is the shirt that Joshua Williams had on. And when he was talking, and then when the students came up, the only thing I kept thinking was, "I'll show you how great I am." And I'm in awe that at such a young age, these students, Joshua Williams, and even, you know, members of the 40 Under 40 that I'm going to announce are openly showing just how great they are at a young age. And not only that, our community's seeing it and acknowledging it. So that means a lot to me. I'm an alum of 40 Under 40. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin and Councilmember Mario Benevente are also alums. So I would like to make, take time to acknowledge our two City of Fayetteville employees. Deonte K. Watson, age 31. He is our Deputy Airport Director at Fayetteville Regional Airport, and so I want to put that into perspective. We have the Director of the Airport, and then there's Deonte, and I think that is major at age 31. I think he got it, he's probably still in his 20s, but... And then we have Mr. Christopher Colley, age 37, who is our Director of Economic and Community Development. And I can see him being, you know, Assistant City Manager. He's not going to agree with that, but he's so, he's so good in his field. Both gentlemen are really good in their field at such young ages, and I'm just, once again, in awe that our community is acknowledging that. And I hope to the ICON members that, you know, you continue to go and show this city and the world just how great you are. And so I just want to acknowledge them. Congratulations on becoming 40 Under 40, to the two, our two staff, and to the ICON members. Thank you for all your great work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And if I could, if we could have the ICON recipients, if they could come stand here, we'll get a picture of council. We could stand at the dais. Also, Shaquilla's a ninth-grade teacher. I would love to talk to you about some things. All right, council, moving along to item 5.0, the City Manager's Report. Mr. Hewitt? Thumbs up. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you much. We have modified an additional line in the, I think it's the CPO, to reflect, as Councilmember here requested, that we also show the FAMPO potential funding. And with council's action on the agenda tonight, that will also be recorded in the minutes as well. But just want to say to the council as well and the public, and thank you for all of your work last week. And we are looking forward to the end of this budget year and the beginning of the budget on Saturday. Thank you.
And just to kind of give some context, because people may or may not know what you're talking about, it was $350,000 passed in this year's budget for the Glenville Lake Trail design and construction, and that was also a FAMPO matching grant of up to $350,000. So Councilmember here was very instrumental in that, and that's what the manager's referring to, so thank you. All right, council, moving to item 6.0, the approval of the agenda. Councilmember Ingram.
Yes, sir. I'd like to move that we approve the agenda.
All right. This is motion by Councilmember Ingram, seconded by Councilmember Thompson. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I look to you for your votes to approve the agenda. All right, Madam Clerk, motion carries unanimous. I love these things, Jennifer. They lighten them fast, better than iPads. All right. Good job, council. Council, moving to item 7.0, the consent. Close this. All right, Councilmember Ingram.
Mr. Mayor, okay. Oh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the consent agenda.
All right, this is motion by Councilmember Ingram, seconded by Councilmember Thompson, it looks like. Any discussion on the motion to approve consent? Council, I look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, motion also carries 10-0 unanimous. Item 8.0, it's the public hearing. Anyone desiring to speak must have signed up in advance. 15 minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. So with that, y'all cut out the rest of it? All right. So with that being said, Madam, when your name is called by the clerk, we ask that you come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record. Then when you see the light, or you're notified that you have 30 seconds left to speak, then again, when your time has expired, you'll be notified that your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we're not able to extend the given time. With that being said, Madam Clerk.
May we just have one speaker for this item? Mr. Christopher Parkhurst.
Good evening, sir. Christopher Parkhurst, 6806 Beaverstone Road, Cliffdale West Community. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilpeople, for this. There's a lot of people on the object to the sewer upgrade in our community, specifically on the Beaverstone Road. We have working septic systems. We don't have a need for a sewer line, not to mention the fees that are talking about $5,000 in cash, or it can be pre-rated over 10 years. This is difficult for a lot of people in the community that's on a fixed income, such as myself. Being a retired veteran that's with an amputee, I'm definitely on a fixed income also. This is a burden on a lot of people, not to mention the interest rate that we're looking at could be flexible. It's a minimum of 2% plus the prime rate for that fiscal year. My questions, I've tried to seek, the answers I've tried to seek to find out more about this, why it's being urged or forced upon us when a lot of us don't want it, don't need it. It kind of resembles a forced annexation, resembles it, didn't say it was. Our wells, our septic systems are working fine. We have questions about the rates, how much it's going to cost, how they come up with these numbers, because we're not on PWC, we are on Aqua, so how would those rates be percentage? From my understanding, it's based off our water consumption, and if we're not part of PWC and we're part of Aqua, where's that information coming from? Not to mention myself personally, I have a sprinkler system. It's on the main line, it's not on a separate system, so that's going to be tabulated and also to the water consumption. The amount that we were looking at, from what I was understanding, was the 5,000 we thought was a little... From what we understand, it's just a hookup to the house. And it's kind of egregious considering some of us, like my septic system, is 20 feet from the road. So that seemed, and again, I might be wrong, and I have tried to find out this information, and I was told there's going to be someone here tonight to give us more information, but apparently not. So what happens if we refuse? If we don't want to do it? If we don't want to hook up? I have no reason to. My septic system works great. Everyone on my streets works great, on Beaverstone. It's an unneeded task, it's an unneeded burden financially on us, and I am just overwhelmed with this decision. That is all I have. I will find out the answer to these questions. Again, limited on time, and I understand you probably not have the answers that I need. I have gone to the Fayetteville website, made some phone calls, and to no avail, everyone just said, "Come here." So I'm at a loss on those. But it's an undue burden. A lot of us don't want it. If it ain't broke, don't try to fix it. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Parkhurst. And with that, I needed to open the public hearing, and Madam Clerk, is that what your message to me was?
I didn't send you a message.
Oh, okay. Well, you got your name up here.
Oh.
All right.
We have no further speakers.
All right, so with that, we'll close the public hearing. Hopefully, there's someone on staff. Typically, PWC has someone here, they handle the sewer extensions. Oh, Lexi? All right, can you kind of answer some of his questions offline? Okay. All right, council, I look to you, Councilmember... Yes, sir. Councilmember Thompson.
No, I don't have anything.
All right, well, Jennifer, these old requests. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor. That was my question. I wanted to know if we had someone here from... So we'll talk offline, because we've had community watch meetings, and PWC has been coming to our community watch meetings for about two years regarding those concerns, but we can definitely talk offline.
All right, council, well, no actions needed. All right. Moving to item 9.01, the evidentiary hearing that was tabled is now back before us. And again, Madam Attorney, a little confused, since the disclosures were read and we've had the hearing, did I need to read them? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. We do need to, at this time, the public hearing has been closed, and it is up to the council to engage in deliberations. However, do think you need to poll the council as to any ex parte communications and then move accordingly from there.
Okay, thank you. And I do see Councilmember Dawkins. And council, what we're talking about is because of the nature and the rules regarding evidentiary hearings, we were briefed by our legal counsel, if you've had any conversations that were outside of this hearing, that you are supposed to disclose it, and if there are anything that presents a conflict, and/or ask for recusal. So, Councilman, Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins, you had something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At our last, or whenever this was, I guess it was about a month ago, approximately, there was a, I believe we tabled it, and the instructions were to have the groups come together with the both, primarily there were two parties, and then there was instruction that the council member for the district, myself, to try to work out something that would be amenable to everybody. Well, I had conversations with Ms. Creasy and also Mrs. Kirby, and to thus, I need to disclose that. And because of that, I did find out that that's not allowable in an evidentiary hearing. So I'm asking the council to produce a motion to recuse me, if that's the correct verbiage, City Attorney.
All right, council, there's a motion on the floor to...
Actually, I can't make the motion.
Okay, well, council, look to, Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to recuse Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins from this item.
All right, so motion by Councilmember Jensen, is there a second? Councilmember Ingram, is that your hand? No. Second by Councilmember Thompson. Let me clear this board, y'all. All right. Any discussion on the motion to recuse? Councilmember Benevente. Councilmember Benevente. It should be mic'd up now. Okay. Yeah, let me see if I can clear it real quick. No, ma'am, not from the audience. Okay. All right, Councilmember Benevente, did your mic ever come up? All right, Councilmember Honduras. All right, Councilmember Benevente, it's...
There you go. Thank you very much. Madam Attorney, can you please clarify? Because I have some ex parte communications to share as well, so I don't believe that's the reason for Mr. Dawkins' need to recuse himself.
It is not necessarily the ex parte communication as it is the substance of the communications. And as Mr. Dawkins stated, he had some discussions with the parties in an effort to try to broker an agreement between the parties, which is what creates the conflict.
I'll go ahead and use this opportunity now, Mr. Mayor, while I have the floor...
Hold on, you have a motion on the floor in proper section?
Yes, ma'am. I'll leave my comments then.
All right, so I'll go back to, is there any other discussion pertaining to the motion that's on the floor, the motion of recusal by Mayor Pro Tim? All right, council, I look to you for your votes on that motion. Okay. All right. All right, Mayor Pro Tim is recused, we'll counsel that. Motion carries eight to one, those voting in oppose. Councilmember here.
Mr. Dawkins can't vote.
Oh, yeah, there's one. All right, so being noted, Councilmember Benevente is green, so it's eight to one, Madam Clerk. Voting in opposition, Councilmember here. All right, can we reset the board? Soon as I talked about sure mic, they started acting up, then... All right, so we're going to clear the board, all right? All right, Council, Councilmember Honduras, she had something. Yeah, I'm trying, it's not allowing me. Okay, here we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to disclose that I did, at a meeting, I believe it was a Builders Association meeting, run into the agent of the applicant that had spoken on the applicant's behalf, as well as one of the neighbors. I think the conversation was general in nature of that this is evidentiary hearing, and that I would stick to the findings of fact, but just want to disclose that and see if I need to be recused.
All right. Madam Attorney, you had anything along those comment on that? Okay, all right. Thank you, Councilmember Benevente. Okay, you got Doug, all right.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin, I must make the same disclosure. I had a conversation with the entire group of folks immediately following the meeting in the hallway. And in addition to that, there were two individuals. The communications were not of the substance of the hearing, but rather the procedure that I don't believe the City Council followed in tabling this matter. And it was also to let them know that I could not speak with them because of the nature of the matter being open. After consulting with the City Attorney, I don't believe that that's grounds for recusal, but I do want to disclose those ex parte communications, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Council, any other disclosures of ex parte conversations reference to this matter? All right, clear the board, Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. Mr. Mayor, if it pleases the Council, I move to approve the special use permit, SUP, to allow two to four family dwellings, one duplex, in the single-family residential 15S15 zoning district, subject to submitted site plans and conforming to the current Unified Development Ordinance standards as depicted on the attached site plan as presented by staff based on the standards of the city's development code and the evidence presented during the hearing. And that the applicant is consistent with applicable plans because, one, the development is located in a single-family 15S15 zoning district, and two, that this use complies with the findings listed, and three, the proposed permit is in the public interest because the proposed SUP does fit with the character of the area. If approved, this special use permit shall become effective with the approval of the order of findings by the City Council. The SUP shall expire one year from the effective date if a building permit is not issued within that time. All six findings below have been met. One, the special use complies with all applicable standards, conditions, and specifications in this ordinance, including Section 30-4C, along with evidence as presented, use-specific standards. The special use will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. In addition to the evidence as presented, the special use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved. In addition to the evidence as presented, the special use is in general conformity with the city's adopted land use plans and policies. In addition to the evidence as presented, the special use, the special use will not substantially injure the value of the abutting land, or the special use is publicly, is a public necessity, and the special use complies with all other relevant city, state, and federal laws and regulations as presented in the evidence. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, this is motion by Councilmember Ingram, seconded by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. Any discussion on said motion? Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I've said it during the last meeting, I said it during the agenda briefing, and I think it bears repeating now. The City Council needs to do a much better job of adhering to the SUP process as it is intended to be followed by law. There is no reason this matter should be before the Council right now, it should not have been tabled. It wasn't a proper motion, and we need to do a better job of adhering to what the ordinances say. There's four options that we could have taken. We need to update what we have currently in the ordinance if and when there is a stalemate of some kind. Because as far as I'm concerned, you get a passing grade, you get your permit if you get a majority of Council, and if you don't have that, then you do not get a passing grade, you do not get your permit. So there needs to be some clarity moving forward in how this Council operates, because as it stands right now, I don't believe that we apply the standards equally across all applications to include this one, thank you.
All right. All right, any other discussion on the motion? Uh, it, no, sir. Sir, 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 this is not the time to do that, okay? And I would actually have... Right, right, we had a hearing and you had opportunity to speak. All right. Ma'am, sir, please have, please, please have them removed. Ma'am, ma'am, I'm not sure who told you and what they told you about, but we need you to maintain the decorum of the room and respect the fact that we're not taking testimony from down there. All right, well, Council, sir, no, please, no more outbursts. You will ask to be removed. All right, there's a motion on the floor, it's seconded. Council, any other discussion from the dais? All right. Please, look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, motion carries six to three, those voting in oppose, Councilmember Benevente, here, and Jensen. Motion carries. All right, Council, look to you for a motion to adjourn.